Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, May 22 of 2018. I'm going to open the meeting at 7:30. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I roll call, please?
Mr. Cussera.
Here.
Ms. Fenton. Mr. Jacobson. Mr. Adia.
Here.
Mr. McHale.
There.
Ms. Prowse. Ms. Scripture.
Here.
Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Thank you. And my item agenda number four is approval of the regular minute meetings from May 8, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from May 8, 2018 of the Planning Commission.
Support?
I have a motion and I have support. Any changes, corrections, deletions? Everything's good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Adia.
Yes.
Mr. McHale.
Yes.
Ms. Scripture.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Cussera.
Yes.
Item number five is consideration of a site plan approval for 303 to 329 West 14-Mile Road in the general business B3 district in consideration of an existing TCO for 303 West 14-Mile, which is Discount Fabrics. Evening.
So this is the new home of Discount Fabrics. We had talked about their old home last week, and the current home of House Optical as well. The addition of the new use required them to go through site plan review. There will be two uses continuing from the current group of tenants, Discount Fabrics and Clausen Shoe, which is a longer-term tenant. As you noted, the TCO for Discount Fabrics has also expired at this point, or is about to expire at the end of the month. And so we put that on the agenda as well. We don't have estimates for the work yet, and so we'll have to talk about what to do about that later on. In terms of vehicle access and driveways, there's one way in and one way out. One way in off of Custer, exiting on Gerald, that's the existing traffic pattern. The only aisle, which is two-way, is in the bay of parking that is on the Custer side of the building. Both the city's engineering consultant and ourselves asked for some improvements to the drive openings because they did not align with the aisle that traverses the site east and west. And some are now proposed, a new landscaped area on the south side of the entry off of Custer and one on the south side of the exit off of, onto Gerald. There are a couple things which I think could be improved there. On the Custer side, you'll note that it's kind of oddly configured as it relates to the parking space just north of that entry. Normally, we would want another landscaped island there to channel traffic. I understand that they're trying not to lose parking. They're right at the minimum, which is 40 spaces based on the use, although there is an opportunity that we can talk about in terms of continuing to use the area that's now designated as a loading area behind the building as parking space, which would keep them in conformity and allow that to be an island there and better channel traffic. At the exit, I'm fine with what they're proposing, except it should continue on through, you see the curbing in the right-of-way, and the Gerald right-of-way doesn't match up with what they're creating to channel traffic out. And so we're suggesting that that be continued on through into the right-of-way. Pedestrian access, there are sidewalks on the three public street frontages. In the past, there was an opening in the little knee wall that screens the parking from 14-Mile Road. We've asked that that be restored, and they are proposing to restore that so that a pedestrian on 14-Mile Road could access the building entry, which you see there is on the Custer side of the building. Off-street parking and design, as I mentioned, the site requires 40 spaces, and 40 are proposed. Moving on to loading, so they are required to have a loading area based on the size of the building, but the loading area that they're showing is really just a parking space in size. And so it might as well just be a parking space, in my estimation. And, you know, if that's a solution for a box truck or whatever that would be servicing the buildings, I don't know that they get deliveries by semi. I think it would be very difficult for a large truck to get through this site. In any event, because the east-west aisle is quite narrow. And so I would suggest just continuing that as a parking space, allow that to double as the loading space, and then make a better entry out of the space that's got the number 10 with the circle around it there, coming off of, I can't quite see it on the screen, but coming off of the other way. There it is, coming off of Custer. The landscaping and screening, the two new islands create opportunities for some additional landscaping, as does the extra-large right-of-way there along Custer. That's called out as a greenbelt, but it's not really a greenbelt. It's the public right-of-way. Custer used to be a boulevard way back when, and so there's a lot of right-of-way there. But they are proposing to put two street trees out there, which I think is great. I did not really understand the landscape plan for the island that's on the south side of the Custer entry. What's called out are three, yeah, red maples, and that would not be possible. What are there supposed to be?
It's the second item there, JCH, Irish Junipers. I had three there, but I missed.
I see. Okay. So ornamentals and evergreens, or shrubs and evergreens are proposed in there, as opposed to any canopy trees. You probably could accommodate a canopy tree if you thought that was important, but there's a power line right behind it, overhead line that runs east and west across the back line of the property, so maybe not the greatest place for anything that's going to have any height to it.
How tall are these in maturity?
I want to keep it low in evergreens.
Sure.
So it's four to six feet for those street trees, and the rest are smaller shrubs.
Okay. So it'd be taller than the privacy fence?
Right, right.
You don't have to say it again.
Since we're talking about a landscape area, the owner wanted to make a small change to that. He's concerned about someplace for snow, so I suggested we could take about three or four feet of that landscape and make that mulch, so there's a place to shove a little bit of snow without injuring the plants. So all I could do is keep the three taller evergreens and have a little less of the small ornamental shrubs or flowers that he's going to put there and create an area at least that's non-planted. So in case he, there's no place for snow really to be pushed other than the right-of-way. So if that's okay, I'd like to just reduce that. So I did a little markup here that I could pass out to show that.
So you're, sorry Greg, apologize. So as far as that, the place he wants to put snow is in the...
The planting area, the first three or four feet.
Okay.
So it'd be a little less planting around the periphery of it.
Okay. All right, we can, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sorry.
There's a requirement for an obscuring wall. There is one, but it is not six feet in height as the ordinance would require today. It's five foot four, and then steps down at the front yards of the adjacent residences. I'm not suggesting you change that, but you should specifically grant a waiver for it, which you're entitled to do if you find the existing screen wall is working adequately. Architecture, they provided photos of the existing architecture. There's no changes really proposed. They are proposing to paint over the tenant names on the awnings. I guess that would be acceptable as an interim measure until they get a new tenant, but I think painting over vinyl awnings isn't a great long-term solution, and those should probably be required to be replaced when a new tenant is found. So for trash removal, oh, and then there's the mural that exists. I believe they're just proposing to remove the mural. The mural isn't proposed any longer. If one, if a new one were proposed, that would have to come back before the Planning Commission for approval. Trash removal, they don't have a place for outdoor storage of trash. Previously, they had proposed an area that was not made of masonry, which would have required a variance, and they've decided to eliminate that and just propose to keep the trash inside and take it out on trash day to the curb. That's fine, as long as they keep it inside until trash day. Sinage, the existing wall signs are shown. There's no other signs proposed. Exterior lighting, the plan is going to replace the current wall packs with down-directed fixtures, so that's appropriate. No other lighting changes proposed. We're comfortable with the plan being given site plan approval if they're willing to address the items that I outlined to your satisfaction. I suggested a list of five conditions there, if you're so inclined. Happy to answer your questions.
The site plan approval we're looking at is only for the one building on here. So down the line, when these other buildings are occupied, is that going to throw us a wrench as to, like, the trash?
No, no, it's all one site. It's good for the whole site. They're doing the whole site.
The site plan is going to cover the whole thing, the temporary...
Correct. There's only one new use, but they're, you know, it's one site, so we're reviewing the whole site.
Now, make consideration of the dumpsters, if it's enough to handle what's there now, but if we add more new buildings, if it'll be adequate?
Yeah, they'll have to address what they believe is going to happen.
If more places come in, there's more trash, then we're going to have to readdress it, then, if that way.
I guess I'll start off with the parking area first. The number 10 area, what I'd like to do there is, because there was a concern for fire truck accessibility, I'd like to propose that area at number 10 to be a curved area that will give you about a 20-foot drive and keep that as a painted line, which is essentially what it is now. And that way, it'll be more maneuverable for trucks, but it won't be a parking zone. It'll be curved. I got a diagram that I could actually pass out there to show you what I'm intending to do. Also, it would also help explain the little bit of planting area. This would be revised, but essentially, this is what I'm talking about, the painted line. You can see the landscaping on that diagram that shows where I would have mulch, just to protect that, and I would move the trees, the shrubs there, a little bit against the wall. But the fact that there's no, I didn't want to have deciduous, so the leaves don't fall into the neighbor's property and get them upset. So that's why I went with evergreens more or less.
Yeah.
Essentially, we don't have a problem with the loading area to be dual-purpose, where it could be loading, or it could be a car space to allow that to not be in a variance. I guess, at first, I was opposed to maybe the unnecessary cost of that little area to the Gerald side to be ripped up, but if the board feels that that's necessary, because the landscaping really forces it to be a narrow thing, but it might be, aesthetically, I can't argue the fact that it would look better if you cut that out rather than striping, but the solution does serve the purpose, I think. So really, the only modification I like to present is the fact that the number 10 car where I show is allowed to be a striped area. I think it would be better to keep that open, but it won't be a parking zone. And the curbing, I think the owner wants to have the freedom of having the curbing of the islands to be whatever he feels is cost-effective. I've proposed landscape blocking, or if you want to go pre-cast rather than integral curve to keep the cost more favorable, but I don't know if the board has a problem with that. But I like to give them some freedom until they get some cost estimates of what that might cost. So essentially, what I'm trying to do is make it more cost-effective, plus make it better in both. And I think what we have was a lot better than when I first presented to Greg, and with these minor modifications. I think the owner's happy with what I'm showing. I don't know if you want to add anything about the trash, but right now, all the tenants don't have a trash dumpster. Only Optical has the dumpster, and he feels that he's going to break that tenant to two smaller units and feel that there's enough room for keeping it inside the building till trash. I mean, it might depend on the use that ultimately will be there, but at this point, you know, this would be a nice solution until we find out further. There was one type of error, too. I'd like to change the 303, add 307, because there's really four addresses. And what the owner's feeling is 303 would be a tenant, 307 is current tenant, and then 319 possibly a tenant, and then 329. I think on Greg's report, as well as mine, I missed 307, as well as he did. So technically, it'd be all four addresses as part of this approval. This is the owner.
Just put a hyphen on it.
Yeah. This is the owner, Frank Jones. I don't know if you want to add anything, Frank, but feel free.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Greg and Art for the work of putting the site plan together. It took it a while, and it certainly come together in good fashion, let me put it that way. The parking lot has served the building very, very well for a good number of years, inasmuch as we never had a fatality or any kind of an accident in that area. My concern initially was the snow removal, because of the big snowstorm we had last year. I know that when we were removing snow, that on the west and each side of the lot, snow was about, maybe six to eight feet high, and covered maybe two or three parking areas. And I was concerned about the elimination there on Custer Street, that back area, where in the past, we have pushed snow into that particular area to clear from that parking lot. But if we can have a little room there, as Art has pointed out, in the area here, the front part of it, whereby we can push some snow up into that particular area, maybe a small amount down to the other end on Gerald Street, and hopefully, we don't get a monumental snowstorm, I'm sure that we'll be fine. That was primarily my concern. Another one thing that I might mention is the entrance off of 14-Mile Road into the lot itself. There is an opening there, or was an opening there. We have indicated on the site plan about reopening that entrance into that lot from the sidewalk. Historically, what we found is that, you know, being a schoolboy myself, I always looked for the shortest distance home, and we would always cut through lots or through parking lots and that sort of thing. And what we found historically is that some of the young people coming home from school would take a shortcut through that parking lot. Instead of walking all the way down to the Custer Street and going down the sidewalk, they would walk through the parking lot, which could be a little dangerous for a youngster. And that's why we secured that area to keep that from happening. And I still feel that that was a good move, in the sense that I don't think it's good for people to be walking in and out of a live parking lot, especially youngsters, taking a shortcut because of the probability that a vehicle might back into them. Those are my concerns. And I'll turn it back over to Art, and you can ask any questions of him as you'd like.
I think the only thing I'd like to add with what you just said is probably 100% of the people that go to Optical drive in there, they don't, do they have any walking traffic, as far as you know?
No, everybody goes to the parking lot.
I mean, the opening is nice for aesthetics and make it pedestrian-friendly, but I guess realistically, they'll drive to this place. So, you know, if you want to consider what he's saying is valid, it makes sense if it was, if it's a use that's not using, like a restaurant maybe would have more walking, but maybe a use like this is a specialty use that doesn't warrant it. Maybe the future tenant might be another story where, you know, it might be worth later, but at this point, you know, if his authority doesn't work out, it might be worth taking that off the, you know, the requirements.
Is that a requirement?
Optical is leaving by fall, of course, so we don't know who's going to be there. I mean, it just makes sense, the reason for having the side, you know, for discussing pedestrian access is so you can access the entrance of the building, right? And the entrance of the building is right there. That's why it was there in the first place, that opening, you know, and it was filled up. And I mean, I don't necessarily buy the issue that people walking in the parking lot is a problem, because obviously, everyone who comes here who doesn't park right next to that entrance is going to walk through the parking lot to get to it. So, you know, I don't think, you know, anybody who might cut through there to cut off that little bit of a corner is really going to be in great danger, especially since now we're cutting that corner on the north side of the entry, and they can just walk through there to get to the public sidewalk.
Okay, point well taken. I'd like to address one more thing, if I may. It was mentioned something about the awning on the outside of the building and in the front as being temporary. That awning is quite expensive. It can be painted, the old name, painted over, and completely neutralize that awning. And I would like to not have that on a permanent, or not on a temporary basis, but on a more permanent basis there. Methodically, it looks much better dressing up the building. And the new tenant hopefully will have some use for it and be able to paint their particular logo or name on it so that they can continue to do business on it.
So Greg, are you positive that this type of awning can't be, isn't set up to have just that type of thing? Remove one logo and put another on there?
I think you can do it. It's just like anytime you're using vinyl paint, right? I mean, it's susceptible to peeling over time, and...
Well, you're not suggesting taking, are you suggesting taking that whole awning down?
I was suggesting that on a temporary basis, they can paint over it until a new tenant comes, and then they need a new, whatever they want as their treatment for that space at that time. You know, because you're talking about now painting it two times, right? You're painting it once to get rid of the current signs that advertise businesses that aren't there anymore, and paying it another time to put the new logo on there or sign.
But if we look at the logo that's on there right now, and it's been on there, I imagine, for quite a long time.
One year.
It looks great.
Just one year.
I mean, I don't see any problem with it. I mean, I guess forcing them to take that down when we don't know what it might look like, I mean, to me, the perfect world would be, let's see what the next logo looks like. And if for some reason, we can say, no, you know, that doesn't look like it's a good visual, then we can suggest taking it down. But right now, I don't know that I want to suggest they take that whole thing down when it potentially could be reused, and it looks good. Like, that logo and that writing on there looks good right now.
I don't know that it's ever been painted before. Maybe they can enlighten us, but I think that's probably original.
Are you just saying until they rent it out, you don't see any reason to take it down?
I don't even know after they rent it out. Like, couldn't someone, I mean, unless it can't possibly be recycled, if you can't, if you could get rid of that logo that's on there right now and add something new to it, is it not a good existing use of that awning, or is there no feasible way of putting something else on there that's going to continue a little bit?
It seems to me we have some problems with, like, Jolie nails a few years back. They put an awning up, and they had letters that I think were peel and stick on there, and they kept falling off.
And if that is the case, then I can see that, if that happens to that.
We made them correct that, yeah.
I'm just saying right now that that sign looks great, and if something could be replicated to look like that, I would be fine with it. But if it can't, then, you know...
Well, is it possible to give it the opportunity, and if it doesn't, or is this a now or never?
Yeah, that's what I'm...
I don't know that a new use is necessarily going to come back here because of the way your site plan review rules.
And we can't make it conditional or anything like that and say, hey, if it looks nasty...
Oh, you could say that that will have to come back before you. You could change that condition to read like that.
Or we could leave it up to administration. If the paint starts peeling off and starts looking shabby, then bring them in here again.
I guess, I mean, I'm willing to give it a shot, but I don't want to be locked into shabby.
No, right.
If it doesn't work, what are our methods to, you know, say, okay, that didn't work, and you agreed that if it didn't work, you'd fix it? You know, give it a chance, but not lock us up?
That's what I would like also.
Mrs. Scripture, we're not into shabby chic. I'm in a humor here.
I understand. Sometimes, you know, things just happen.
No, I want it to look, I want it to look good. We're spending a lot of money on this property. We've already spent about $60,000 since the last meeting. And I want the property to look as it should. I want it to look right.
So you're saying if we did say, yes, you may give it a shot with painting it, but if it ends up not working...
If it begins to look shabby, we'll have them take the...
You would allow us to come back without anger and say, fix it?
Sure, they could take the canvas off and put a whole new topping on it. I mean, you have the basic frame there. Absolutely. I don't want anything that does not look proper, as the city does not either.
But I don't want to abdicate our right to enforce that in the future, is right? That's what you were kind of getting at, too?
Exactly what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Because that kind of serves a twofold purpose, too. You've got decorative as far as the awning itself. It's somewhat distinctive, so customers can identify with it. But it also serves as a weather deterrent, too, as far as inclement weather, rain, snow, things like that. Kind of helps protect the windows, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So am I mistaken, looking at the picture that we have, that there's pavement that goes up to the wall, as if there was an entrance there at one point in time?
No, no, no.
Right there.
It looks like a slab in front of the window.
No, no, no. That was always one piece.
So was there, there was never a door there?
No.
Flower pots. Okay. So as far as snow plow and snow removal, you, it usually goes into that southwest corner? Is that what you were saying?
That's correct. You know, that's been an opportune place, you know, to push snow from the parking lot and from the main lot. And with the big snow that we had, we can all attest to the fact that it was, we had some big snow piles here in Clausen. And I know that the snow was about either six or eight feet high at each end, and it took about two or three different parking spaces. And that spot back there was most opportune as far as piling snow into. And so I, to be perfectly honest with you, I was a little concerned about, you know, the landscaping part of it going in there, unless we have a little bit of leeway whereby we can put some snow back.
So you're talking about removing the front three feet of that?
Yeah, and I think to protect the plants, I would probably put a slight burn towards the back portion to raise the planting, but maybe the first four feet would be just mulch or some other material that would take the snow and not hurt the plants.
Okay. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, it's the fact that you've come in front of us for an actual landscape that I actually like, as opposed to some other situations where we've not had anything and refused to do it, right? That I'm willing to look at alternatives, as far as not necessarily shrubs, but perennials. Is that something that we can consider? Or is that, okay. So, you know, because my concern is that...
And I'm talking like Baptisia or Rebecia, things like that, that'll just continue to come back.
Absolutely.
And then, and then you just push the snow down and you worry about in the spring when they come back.
That's, that's... What's wrong with you to raise flower bed?
Yeah. And the nice thing about Rebecia, or not Rebecia, but Baptisia is actually looks like a shrub, but it actually, it's perennial. So the only thing you need to do is cut that down in the fall and remove the spent, spent plants and it'll just regenerate.
Very good suggestion. I live on a golf course. I do a lot of planting around my condominium and, and that's a very good idea, a good, very, very good suggestion.
There may be three different types and varieties to fill in that space, so...
I think we'll do that if you're in agreement.
Oh, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see. The fact that you, you came and, you know, like I said, that it was actually landscaped, I'm not a fan of, of barberry, right? But that's another story. So if we can get rid of that, that'd be great, too.
Good suggestion, Glenn. Oh, thank you, I appreciate it.
If we, if we look at, you know, your item number six, you're talking about the screen wall between that and the residential district. The existing wall is five foot four in heist. The commission has the authority to approve this alternative height if it determines to be adequate in the circumvent. What is our ordinance now?
Six, six feet.
Six foot?
Yeah. And they, I mean, they call out a portion of it, I guess, as six feet. I don't know if that's really so, but it, another portion of it's five foot four. In the similar circumstances, if we haven't had any complaints...
Right.
If it drops to two feet at the ends.
Yeah, yeah, right. In the front yards, you don't want it to be that.
That was my next move. If residents are bugging this piece of property, have they been notified that this is happening and has anybody come in and complained that the wall's too short? Have we had...
There's been, I mean, there was no public notice other than what is typically publicly noticed for these meetings and this was not a specialty use in any way, so, so, no, they weren't notified directly. But to my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints about that particular wall either.
No complaints over the heist, okay.
Well, if I was there and I'm backing out of my driveway, I sure want to see traffic.
Exactly.
I can't see it if I don't have a monster truck.
Right.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions, whites?
So, again, just as far as finalizing on the, the awning, we're saying that we would like it to come back whenever there's a new tenant for that location.
Right. Let's paint it over and if it becomes in sad condition, we'll, we'll be made aware of it again.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? All right.
Could that be done administratively rather than coming in?
I believe so.
For awnings or, I don't...
Well, if, you know, if it gets to a point of like shabbiness...
Because it includes a sign.
Not all awnings have to have a sign, though. Um, but so, and I think, I think if you were to prove it as part of a condition, I mean, we can go back and say, that gives administration some more authority to say, yes, you know, this was part of your site plan, make some disrepair, you know, I think that, I would like that.
Yeah, I like that, too.
You could, you could say that the painting of the awnings will be permitted as long as it doesn't result in them looking, however you want to term it, shabby. Resulting in peeling paint. And so then they're to come back before the planning commission.
We can't, we can't delegate it to Jim.
Uh, you, you can delegate to him, yeah, whatever you want, you can delegate to him in that regard, but...
And if he has a problem...
The question is, now you're going to have to change, if it's in disrepair, it's going to have to be changed, right?
Disrepair, that's the word you should use, disrepair.
Hit on it by accident there.
Yeah, that's the word, got that, Glenn?
If it's a disrepair, that, that it's going to have to be changed and presumably, in fact, I think that at least as the ordinance is written currently, that's a major change and they have to come back before the planning commission.
Well, it has to, it has to, but at least we gave the chance to, to not have to change it if it works.
They can paint them as long as it doesn't result in the awnings appearing to be in disrepair.
Okay, good.
Perfect.
Got it in there?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I guess I'll entertain a motion then.
Uh, hold on a second. Pardon me, I'll, I'll take a moment.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay. So as far as, but if it's painted, painted does not include signage on the awning, right?
At this point, right.
Well, I'm saying painted a solid color, right? When we say paint, oh, I painted a sign on it.
Well, it could conceivably, they could come get a sign permit that could involve painting it some more.
Yeah.
Right? And I would say that would...
But what kicks it back to us? If it's, if it put a sign...
Comes to be in disrepair, it comes back to you.
Okay. If it comes in, okay, then...
I like it that way even better.
Yeah, I do, too.
Keep getting this one better, one time's a save.
Well, Jim, FBI, whatever condition it looks in, and if it's a signage problem, I mean, there are specific sizes and limitations on that.
There's a very good awning company on the south side of 14 mile road west of Crooks, or maybe this side of Crooks. And I'll go in to talk to those people to see whether or not they do have a good paint. I'm sure they do a fabric paint that's durable, you know, won't chip or won't peel. I'm sure they do.
Yeah.
And so we'll be assured that it won't be shabby. You can count on that.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we grant site plan approval for 303-2329 West 14 Mile with the following conditions. One, a curbed island shall be provided on the north side of the Custer Avenue entry and an additional parking space shall be added behind the building in lieu of a dedicated loading area.
Now, they wanted to, they wanted to paint that.
They paint, okay. So that they wanted...
So that space would be removed and a hatched, curved hatched area provided to channel traffic.
So a curved hatch area from Custer shall be provided and one parking space shall be painted in hatch stripe.
Right.
Two, the curb line for the new island and the south side of the Gerald entry shall be continued through to the travel area of the road. Number three, the new landscape island at the Custer entry shall be replaced with at least three species of perennials, for example Baptisia, B-A-P-T-I-S-I-A, but shall be maintained so as not to be in disrepair.
A new catchphrase.
Four, the commission finds a height of the existing obscuring wall to be appropriate under the circumstances. And five, any new tenant shall come before the administration for review of approval of continued use or removal of the awning with the condition of the awning may be painted in the interim and kept as long as the awning does not appear in disrepair. If so, then shall come before the planning commission for review.
Well done.
Did we want to administrate him on that one?
No. That's what he said we shouldn't do.
No, no. I said, shall it come before administration?
If you're going to put a new autograph, it's got to come before you.
If it's new, yeah. If it's new, we're talking about the paint part.
That would be code enforcement.
Okay. No problem.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have support. Roll call, please.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Ms. Scripture?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. Adia?
Yes.
So now the other thing is the fact that the discount fabric TCO is about to expire at the end of the month. They don't have an estimate with them today for the site work. I don't, can you, can you ballpark it at all, Art?
I think last, last time you had escrow already put on the site, right?
I already put $5,800 in escrow for the parking lot to be redone, which is sitting there now.
Put another $5,000, maybe?
And, and I, I don't know what it's going to cost for the landscaping and the curbing and that sort of thing, but I could put another five. But, you know, I'm going to need a little money to pay off some of these space people and just basically consume air conditioning, heating units off of the buildings. Having the roads be done is costing me another $35,000 right now. So I've just spent since our last meeting probably about $50,000 or $55,000 on the building. So I'm getting a little low on money. I, like I said, I do have $5,800 in there now and I put those $3,000 towards the building.
What, what additional things are not covered by that 58?
Well, I don't recall how we came up with the number of 58. Remember, there was no site plan at the time that we approved the TCO for discount fabrics, so I think it was just a ballpark number on parking lot repairs. So now we have the new curbed islands and some landscaping and, and striping, basically, Seems, seems like a reasonable number to me. The other thing then you have to establish is how long they have to, to complete the site work.
Well, that type of work can be done in this type of climate right now, so, and most TCOs are extended, what, 30 days or 60 days?
60 days, I think, is the general ordinance aside. For six months, I'm sorry, six months is junk with the ordinance, does it?
Six months.
Is the maximum that you could extend a TCO? I think you guys typically do 60 days, five.
Yeah, I'm not looking for the maximum because I think cement work, concrete work, landscaping work should be done during this season.
Landscaping has to be done now.
You could say, you could give them 90 days and say, you know, essentially it has to be done by September 1st, you know, and then that gives them the whole season and if they don't, then...
Would you be happy with...
Or maybe you want to stay until July and then have them...
That'd be okay, would you freeze?
Yeah, that would work. I've already got the parking lot reserved this time. It's American asphalt, it's just north of here. And I've got him lined up to, to go along the parking lot. But, you know, and I'll get the, some bids on the work for the landscaping and the curbing and that sort of thing. And I'm sure we can get it done on a timely basis. Whatever timeframe you can give me that's workable on it.
I'd lean towards, I'd lean towards 90 days. I don't know, do, do we actually want more monies down in escrow or...
I don't think so.
Can we just live with what we have? What's the feeling?
I can live with what's there.
I believe I could, too.
I think I would be fine with that.
Does anybody have any problem with, you know, we don't want to, we won't raise your escrow, but we'll give you 90 days. And if work's not completed at that point, we'll, we'll see you back here in 90 days and we'll figure out what, where to go from there.
Very fair, thank you.
I got one question for clarification, unless I missed it. Did we decide that we have to have that opening along the 14 mile road or, or could he have the wall contained for egress or, I don't know if that was discussed or not.
Well, that's on your site plan to remove it. So we're assuming you're removing the...
I guess Frank was mentioning to the owner that he...
If you feel it should be removed, I'll remove it.
Right.
I just wanted to cite the reason why it was, you know...
Right, understood.
...closed before, but...
So right now, as it stands, he'll, he'll don't want that opened again, so...
Yeah, yeah, that's...
All right. I just want to make clear.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to need a motion to extend the TCO?
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we extend the TCO for 303-329 West 14 Mile for 90 days.
Support?
I have a motion, I have support. Roll call, please.
Ms. Scripture?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. Adia?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And item number six is considering extending the TCO for 1060 West 14 Mile Road, which is Haberman Fabrics. All right, turn your page here, too.
Art, do you want the, you circle agent? Do you want the...
Well, their TCO is up at the end of this month, too, and Mark Weir's here to report on how they're doing and what they're making.
I still have 10 days. I think I'm going to make it.
Oh, yeah?
All right. I know I'm here as a courtesy, but I just want to let you know, I think I'm still going to make it. The parking lot could be a trouble. But as far as the landscaping, that should be done in the next couple of days. Start tearing up the sprinkler system and the two catch basins should be completed. I just wanted to basically come in and thank the board. I think if you remember about three months ago, you gave me the temporary certificate of occupancy so I could open up. And I told you, one of the problems I was having was the time, the timeframe that I was up against and I felt the builders knew or the contractors knew I was up against that time.
They were going to soak you for it, yeah.
So by getting that extra, you know, two or three months you gave me, I was able to get much better prices. My, my discussions were pretty much, this is what I'm going to pay, take it or leave it, I'll go find somebody else. Because you gave me that time, I can tell you my catch basins went from $18,000 down to $6,500.
Hmm.
Nice.
Huge, huge. The landscaping, instead of taking delivery costs for this and delivery costs for this, I'd say, I'll go pick the darn thing up. And instead of being $6,000, my landscaping's now down to about $2,500. The lighting that I had put in the building, LED lighting, because I pulled the drop ceiling down and I told you before, if I could get it opened up a little bit more time, then the contractor would come in, he could see what I was doing, where the problems were. So instead of being 17, 18 grand, it was down to like nine to 10. Same thing with the heating and cooling, because I pulled the ceiling down, he was able to get up in there, no obstruction. Instead of being 12, 13, he was doing it for nine. So for one thing, I want to thank you for that, for giving me that time. As far as what needs to be done, I had said before that there's always problems unexpected. We started to pull up the, the landscaping and it turns out that my sprinkler system is connected to Noble's. That was just found out this morning, okay? So what I have to do is get with Noble and have to make sure they don't turn their sprinkler system on because I've already cut the pipes, getting ready to tear up and water's just going to fly everywhere. So I just found that out about two hours ago through the previous owner, trying to make some phone calls. There's miscommunication. He's got my money, so he doesn't want to talk to me anymore about what needs to be done. So he was courteous enough to call me today, but the controls are controlled by Noble, so if they turn their system on, my sprinkler system's going to come on. So obviously with the lots being split, it has to stop. I have to cap that off or else he's going to be paying my water bill, which shouldn't be right in the first place. So that's what's happening tomorrow morning, as soon as I get that cut. If you notice from the sidewalk, going up to the parking lot, it rises gradually after the parking lot. By digging in there, the reason why that's happening is because when they did the concrete and the asphalt, they threw it over the edge and they just put dirt over it and that's why it comes up. So all that's going to be leveled off to the sidewalk to the curb, so when I put the mulch, I don't have another two or three more inches. I don't have another two, three more inches. And then it's gonna be like, you know, sidewalks here is gonna go up like that, okay? We don't want that, so that's why we're cutting that away. Like I said, the catch basins, we have Levine and Sons from Southfield, probably next week. So that'll make my, that'll make my May thirty-first. The seal coating, the saw cutting, the parking lot, I'm still in a stare-down with this guy, I like him, you know? He was the first guy that came out, I'd like to get him to work. And I've told him I've got about a week, so probably on that, if I could get another thirty, sixty days just on the seal coating and the saw cutting, that should be taken care of, and those were the three things on the bond. And then Suzie had asked me about the building, when we're gonna paint it, and we're in that season.
Yep.
And gonna start painting, start painting, start painting, getting that cleaned up. I was also able to, Mr. Albus, when he came out to do my certificate of inspection on the repairs, because I had the drop ceiling down on the upstairs, I was able to find out where all those leaks were, and some of them weren't even on the ceiling, they were in the parking lot, they were backfilling underneath the building. And that was a twenty dollar repair. When the roofing guys were coming in there and giving me quotes for thirty and forty thousand dollars, one of the repairs was a twenty dollar repair, it was a crack in the asphalt that was backfilling underneath the building and coming up through the carpet. Another one was a seam in the window, it separated, and the water was pulling right there, and it was coming right down the building. I put a bucket in there and I monitored for the last two months, and every time it rains, it fills up, and I was able to catch that. All the intrusions around the HVAC systems were all leaking. If I can get a roofer guy up there just to do that work, but all of them want to replace the roof. Roof doesn't need replacement. Saved me about forty, fifty thousand dollars, just by doing that, three months monitoring the building. Also on the parking lot, if I was to go with the way the striping is right now, if you, if you're heading east on Fourteen Mile and you try to turn north on Manitou, and you try to make that quick turn into my building and park in the front, because all of the parking is head-in parking, heading west. What happens is, when those cars heading east try to turn into my building, when another car is coming out on the Manitou, trying to come onto Fourteen.
Blocks your drive.
It blocks that drive, and when another person is trying to make that left, they're getting caught on the Fourteen Mile. And I've seen it, only reason why I've been able to see that for the last two months, instead of doing that parking lot and striping it the way it is now in the front, I would have wasted all my money, because I would have seen that and I would have said, I need to change that.
Traffic can still access from behind your lot, though, right?
Yes.
Behind your building.
But what happens is, when the people are heading east, they want to make that first turn into my parking, and they stop right there.
Right, okay.
So the next, they're not realizing that there's somebody coming behind them, they're getting stuck on the Fourteen Mile.
Yeah.
So what I plan on doing is, all of the head-in parking that is heading west, I'm gonna change it to where you come in off of Noble's, you make the turn on the Noble's and you head in, so when you come out, you're coming out on the Manitou to make the right. So those are the little things, by you granting me that two or three months, I've been able to monitor the building, because I cut the grass, I'm working on the building, I do the tear-down, and I see these things. So it saved me a lot of time and effort to re-striping the parking lot. Months later, I would have seen that, it was not set up right, we want to turn it the other way.
Sounds good, but with all that work you have, you can't go accomplish that in ten days?
Parking lot, I think I was kind of overstepping on the parking lot. I can't get that in ten days.
What are you seeking, thirty days, sixty days?
Sixty days would be great.
Hmm.
For the parking lot, I'll take thirty. I'll take the challenge.
What's the feeling as a commission, thirty, sixty?
I'll give him sixty.
We just gave someone else ninety.
Sixty works for me.
A generous move today, we'll go with.
I mean, he's shown up progress in other things, I would work with sixty, too.
Yes, I like the fact that you're coming in here, you're discussing it, you're not hiding out and you don't cause any problems.
Yeah, it doesn't really compensate. But I like the fact that being able to monitor the building and see how the people are pulling in, and everybody's confused right now on how to pull in, and like I said, they're getting stuck when they go out, come on the Fourteen Mile. I don't want to brag, but it's going pretty good.
Yeah, see, quite a few cars there, yeah.
Now I just gotta get the money for my wife. I told you before, she runs the bottom half, and I'm in the backseat, so it's not, you gotta give her the money so I can get these repairs done. It's going good. We just learned today that we could be, we're being nominated for our magazine business, business, small business of the year.
All right.
Yeah, because of the fast turnover we did from Royal Oak to Claussen, so that could be a nice article coming out in the next, next month.
Great.
And they're gonna have their grand opening in June, you're all invited. Hopefully we have the parking lot done by then. That's the key, maybe that's the deadline. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, I didn't think about that. But sixty days would be great.
Okay.
I mean, that grand opening is clearly in center for you to get as much done as possible for your own sake.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Get the building painted, you know? Yep.
We'll call you painting it.
Huh?
We'll call you painting it.
That's Patty, she takes care of that stuff.
Okay.
You know, they all, they all have that fashion eye. I just wait for the paint, I just wait for the paint to show up and.
Put it on, yep.
Put it on.
Okay. Motion, please.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the temporary certificate of occupancy for ten sixty West Fourteen Mile Road, otherwise known as Haberman Fabrics, for sixty days.
Second that.
Motion, support, roll call, please.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Cussera.
Yes.
Mr. Adia.
Yes.
Mr. McHale.
Yes.
Ms. Scripture.
Yes.
Okay, I guess I'll have another sixty days.
Thank you.
Thank you for working with Claussen here.
All right, have a good day.
You, too.
Agenda item number seven is public discussion, items not on the agenda, anyone from the public wishing to speak?
I wish to speak if, once we find out if anybody else out there wants to speak.
Well, I, you want to speak under public or do you want to speak under other business?
I don't care, but I'm speaking. You tell me when to speak.
We'll let you speak, okay. I see no one from public being interested, so I'll close public discussion. And now we move on to item number eight, which is other business.
Could I say something first? So I have been approached by a number of businesses as far as lights not operating down Main Street. Is there a person, they've attempted to put, turn lights on and that has not happened?
How are?
Yeah. Where at, where did you say this was at? In front of Tavern on Main, so.
So it's possible it's related to the construction that's happening? I can certainly bring it up to our Director of Engineering Services, I know that they're, obviously, they're doing an exceptional amount of work, so.
Sure, sure. And then as far as, obviously, we've got other potholes in the city that we've kind of, you know, concentrated, and I appreciate what they're doing as far as downtown, but we've got some other road repairs that are now getting worse by the day in some of the other non-downtown Fourteen and Main intersections.
Just so I, you know, clearly state this to them, are we talking streetlights, are we talking?
There's a street lamp. Yeah, that's right in front of Tavern on Main, that, it's pretty noticeable for foot traffic, and that kind of is, you know, they don't have that front door anymore.
Right.
All right, so in the dark, it's kind of.
A little scary?
Yeah.
Any other lights that you've noticed or anyone else?
That's the only one, and like I said, as far as, I seem to see a little more unusual amount of potholes, but I could attribute that to the amount of construction that's actually going on downtown, so.
Okay.
There's a lot of other traffic that have been cutting through some of the side streets, so as far as, you know, and then part of it with that, I wanted to bring that up, is the traffic and board, safety board study, and I'm like, okay, well, you know, what was it, as far as, you know, some of these other side streets that are, you know, bearing the brunt of diverting traffic coming down some of these neighborhoods, so.
I will make sure to bring it up to them as soon as I see them.
Good, thank you.
What is the comment here on the seven point one traffic and safety?
It should have been eight point one, that was before I added the other item, but we distributed in your packet a resolution from the Traffic and Safety Board and also report, Transportation Improvement Association, about parking related to Woodpile, I'm just giving you that tonight for your information. Development team talked about it last week, and the city manager directed, that the engineering consultant look at the Church of Claussen site plan, which we have before us right now, and estimate the cost of repairs associated with that parking lot, and with the idea being that we could explore that as potential overflow parking if it were in public use.
Um, I have another proposal.
Okay.
Across the street at Main and Charlevoix, and the business, you know, the parking lot behind that now vacant business, or seemingly, you know, ad nauseam vacant business. But the only concern is that that light does not function all the time, and I would love to see that light function as an actual crosswalk.
Right.
So that you could use that area.
Right, yeah, that's the problem with, with trying to cross down there and having any, we've had various people talk about one side or the other and have, you know, a lot of the spaces down there don't have enough off-street parking, and whether or not they could provide it elsewhere when the, when the lot next to Woodpile was for sale, there were many discussions about that, but there being no legitimate crossing makes that not viable currently.
I mean, it is during school days, but, I mean, that's.
It's not when people are going to the bar.
No. I'd love to see that change, so, but, yeah, because I mean.
Most of us don't go that time of day.
Yeah, because, I mean, Church of Claussen is far down the road, they would end up.
Two blocks, you know, in the summertime, it would be doable, but, you know, for, I mean, for sure, there's an issue, it's kind of a, I mean, if you're interested, I've looked at it some, it's kind of a, no one, no one thing that's contributing to what happened there. I mean, on the one hand, you had it viewed as a continuation of a non-conforming use, which was really a drive-in restaurant, and now it's not a drive-in restaurant. Number two, when Woodpile went in there, A and W had two times as much parking as Woodpile has, and, and one whole bay of parking was taken out to create a green belt. Number three, the view at that time, view the outdoor seating as being, you know, seating that should be calculated according to the outdoor seating calculation in the, in the off-street parking requirements of the zoning ordinance, but that is intended to be a calculation used with a sit-down restaurant, right? That's adjunct seating, and you already have a sit-down restaurant parked the way a sit-down restaurant could be parked. When you combine that with the carryout parking calculation, you didn't have anywhere near enough parking for a use like that. And I don't know which number I'm up to, but next, and most significantly, they were granted a liquor license. And now, instead of a carryout restaurant where you're gonna spend a limited amount of time there, now you have motivation to hang out, and of course, that's what people do. On the other hand, it's very successful.
Very successful.
You know, and asset to the community, certainly, and so it would be a shame to punish them for it, in my estimation.
Or the future or any other business that may come under similar circumstances. I mean, as far as, you know, it's the Chutneys, for example, I mean, that's been doing very well, this is my estimation, but, yeah, it's just a shame as far as, because the other part of it is that, you know, I've seen a lot of people run across the street and not using, you know, because there's no legitimate way to cross up until you get to Fourteen Mile, and that's a concern. I mean, I see it all the time on that section of town.
I think we are adding one more as part of the, the road work at Jefferson, is that right?
Yes, there is gonna be an additional pedestrian crossing.
There's an island or?
It's just gonna be a painted crossing.
See, that's what happens now.
A crossing.
You know, and it's.
You know. Painted crossing?
Yeah, a painted crossing, just like that.
It's one of those that it's so bad, I mean, you see that there's pedestrian crossing, right? And during the Halloween festivities, right, where we're sponsored, they go indoor-to-door, there were thirty kids with adults trying to cross that, that intersection at Walper and Main, and then they had to walk out in front, and people just completely ignored them, and that's, that's a shame, right? So, you know, I had, well, anyway, so I've had other encounters where, you know, just trying to cross that, that section, that it's the law, but no one pays attention to it, right? So, and, you know, and the other side of that is seeing people not use the pedestrian islands.
Right.
Right, or not appropriately, you know, or just circumventing them altogether. I don't know what the, the appropriate use of that light is, other than make it full-time and, you know, decrease the amount of weight for cross traffic, but I don't know.
Besides zebra stripes, is it gonna have all the flashing lights like the other ones?
I don't believe it is, I think it's just gonna be the painting.
What's gonna stop cars from stopping?
A police officer.
Well, officers.
They're not gonna be there all the time.
Well, I have no answer for your question, but I, you know, I mean, it's gonna be painted as far as I know, I haven't heard of any, any additions of any signaling, I suppose it could be something that is explored, depending on how well.
Yeah, well, during the exploration, just like Royal Oak, they have the stop for pedestrians on the walkways.
Right, I mean, it could be, it could be that.
Speed limit is only twenty-five, so going north and south on Main Street.
We decided we didn't like the looks of those sawhorses in the middle of the street.
No, these were the stand-up on a pole.
Yeah, well, they have some small posts in the main drive.
No, I was looking at the creme de la creme.
Okay. Yeah, this is a painted thing. So we can expect to see the Church of Claussen in front of us when they get their ducks in a row?
When they get their ducks in a row.
Yes.
Okay, anything else going on around town?
Well, also in your packet is the, the city picnic for our employees and volunteers on Thursday, June fourteenth, at five-thirty at City Park, so I know I've heard from a few of you if you will be able to attend and how many, so if you're still checking your calendars, do so and let me know, I think the deadline is, I think we need a head count by June first, so.
Yes.
Did you get mine?
Yes, I did, thank you. So let me know by the first if you're gonna come, how many in your entourage, and I will pass that information along to the clerk.
Do you have something to say, Reese?
I do have something to say. I absolutely have something to say. So we were not given an opportunity earlier to speak at the public, we weren't given, there was no public comment allowed, there was no question and answering allowed, so this is our room right now, this is our, and I don't know what happened, because I'm not even sure what to say about it, because it is obvious that there is a whole lot going on that involves planning, it involves planning commission and the planning staff, which we are directly involved with, that has not been shared, that it was clear that there was a meeting scheduled tonight to deliberate, we were not given official notice, to the best of my knowledge of this meeting, of this workshop, that would directly involve us. It was clear to me that it was an effort to publicly humiliate Greg, in my opinion. I think it was inappropriate, I think not allowing us to speak was inappropriate, I don't know what the city council is doing, I don't know why, I know that one city council member has been excluded from a lot of the considerations, and, you know, I think the word shady comes to mind with whatever's going on. Somehow or another, we just find out that we are about to get a new planner, we are told that our current planner has, this is not a reflection, they said in the meeting, of his performance whatsoever, but for some reason, we need a new one. And, but I don't even know how to speak to that, because we were not allowed to ask questions, we have been kept out of any informative loop, and unfortunately, and this would be on me, I've been out of town for the last three city council meetings, so I would not have been able to come in and ask questions, although I wouldn't have known what to ask, because there has been nothing discussed, other than at the budget meeting, which was confusing, and I don't even know what to say. So I want to go on the record somehow, some way of saying that whatever is happening, I think is somewhat on the inappropriate side, and I'm not comfortable with it, and I'm not happy about it, and frankly, it's not gonna make for a really nice picnic. So I don't know what else to say. If anybody else has anything to add.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, to the same thing. The one thing I felt like, I sat in a meeting and it felt like they were intentionally trying to embarrass you, and I do not find that acceptable. I would never condone that with my children, with the places I worked, and that, to me, is all that felt like, and I was really disappointed in seeing that, and I'm sorry that you had to experience that. And Suzie, that kind of felt like it was a little bit directed towards you, I didn't hear quite as much as I did about Greg, but I just found it unacceptable.
Well, I'm gonna echo in, too, because I felt that at that meeting, we just left, the council wasn't asking any really good questions, the one subject that was brought up was a budgetary one, nickels and dimes. The thing about it is, I didn't hear anything equate to the activity and the development that Claussen had, as far as, oh, they said we were over budget, well, what did they budget? And how did they figure that budget? I mean, it takes time, especially when we were growing like we were last year. We weren't just sitting here idly on that, and my compliments to Greg on what he presented to us, we were informative, he answered all the questions that we had, so I didn't have any problems with his performance with us, I was quite, quite happy with it, and he always answered the questions. But it seemed they were pretty stalemated in that workshop, and I agree with Reese, who knows what kind of collaboration went on, and if there's any legalities on freedom of information, where emails can be requested on the open format for any kind of business, because they are our public servants, just a thought. But thank you, Greg, for everything.
Thanks for your comments.
Yes. Greg, thank you for your service. It's been an honor and a privilege to have worked with you, and I'm deeply ashamed as far as what's happened. This is not the community that I want to represent. I will stay on this board, but I am deeply saddened as far as what has happened. And it angers me to no end that this has gone on, and we're being put in this situation. I'm really upset by this.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that this meeting be adjourned.
I'll second.
A motion of support. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Cussera.
Yes.
Mr. Adia. Mr. McHale.
Yes.
Ms. Scripture.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.